Good evening. Welcome to the December 8th meeting of the Select Board of Auburn, Mass. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Furthermore, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, 1-408-650-3123, and access code 235-235-861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotameting.com/join235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. Please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so on our agenda tonight, let's see, do we have any public comments? Anyone sign up? Oh, great. I take Mr. Coleman, Chief Coleman, who signed up? Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Just wanted to provide a quick update to the Board, an update on the SAFER grant hiring process. So as you are aware, we received the federal SAFER grant for eight positions. We had an existing vacancy in the department, which then meant we had nine positions to fill. I'm happy to report that eight out of the nine positions, we were able to get some very qualified individuals who are currently full-time firefighters, who have the full-time academy training. So only one of the nine members, we will need to send to the Fire Academy in the spring. So we're very, very happy with this round of hiring. And then, I know some of the members of the Board were able to join us this afternoon for our promotional ceremony. This afternoon, we promoted two new captains to the department, four battalion chiefs, and Greg Moran was promoted to the Fire Marshal position. So thanks to the Board members who were able to make it. I just wanted to provide that quick update. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Continuing, we have presentations and public hearing. We have a presentation by the Animal Control and DDIS regarding the dog licensing fees. Okay? Why don't you come up to the, either right here or at the podium? Whatever you want. And just identify yourself too, please. Thank you.
Hi, sure. Thank you. Good evening, Board. My name is Amy Kontois. I was the former full-time ACO in the Town of Auburn. I'm now serving in assistant capacity to our new full-time ACO, Tanya Corbo, and we're also here with Ginger, our town clerk. I want to thank you for the opportunity for tonight, to give us, to let us present this information to you. I know there's been a lot of discussion the past few months over dog licensing, the role dog licensing plays in the town, in our community, and animal control overall. So we're hoping that the presentation answers a lot of the questions that have come up in some of these meetings. So to dive into a little bit of dog licensing in general, the licensing history goes back pretty far. So dog licensing in Massachusetts originated back in 1797. So it started as a means to, initially as a measure to control the spread of what was called canine madness at the time, but was later to be known as the rabies virus. This Act set an early framework for dog licensing. It defined the licensing period from May 1st to April 31st, which is still pretty, pretty in sync with our licensing timeframes now. It set the requirement of identifying the number of dogs per property, required that dogs must wear collars with their owner's name and place of residence on them, and have it be legible on the collar. And then, fast-forwarding to the Acts of 1869, so that's where the dog tax originated from. So originally, the dog tax, it created a statewide system for collecting dog fees for dog licensing. And initially, those funds were used to support what at the time was the State Agricultural College, but also local public services, like public libraries and public schools. And now, this came about 16 years after the invention of the rabies virus inoculation for humans by Louis Pasteur. And the vaccine for dogs, however, didn't become available until the 1920s, and it wasn't considered a core vaccine until the 1980s. So one of the most important frameworks for dog licensing was to help prevent the spread of rabies, which is a serious health concern. And this is just an example of our earliest dog licenses. So this is a copy of a dog license from 1890. I believe this was from the Town of Amesbury. And now, past to present, so the reason for dog licensing, early dog licensing helped track dogs and rest, and helped alleviate the spread of rabies in communities, but rabies is still a concern across Massachusetts. We have rabies present in every community. It encouraged responsible ownership, tags connected dogs to owners, it reduced the stray population and improved public safety. Licensing also provided towns a means of identifying and managing dangerous, aroming animals, and the fees collected helped to fund municipal needs for public institutions and infrastructures. So the licensing requirement. Licensing is a state law. It is a mandated requirement under Chapter 140, Section 137. Every dog at least six months old or older is required to be licensed in the state. So this, it's a statewide standard, and it supports rabies control, owner accountability, and effective, sorry, municipal animal management. So why should you license your dog? It gets them home. So that's the number-one reason that we try to instill into the residents. It's the quickest way for us to reunite owners with their lost pets. If a dog is wearing a tag on their collar, we can, we have mobile availability for the dog licensing system, so we can enter that tag number into the online database, we can get in contact with an owner, either have a phone number available, we can have an address if the dog is up to date on its license, if it has a current rabies vaccine. Oftentimes, we're just driving a dog home. So if we can avoid the animal entering the shelter, that's our main goal. We want the animal back with its family. It supports public health. So proof of a current rabies vaccine is required for licensing. It helps to reduce the spread of rabies, helps with exposure for residents, and it's a critical public health safeguard for the community. And the process is easy. Since we do have online registration, it just takes residents a couple of minutes to fill that out. We try to make the processes seamless as possible. Every resident and household is mailed a dog license application with their town census, so they have that available. They can also license online, by mail, or in person here at Town Hall. And again, it's the law. It is a requirement by law. So the town clerk's office is the issuer of dog licenses, and the enforcement responsibility falls on animal control through Mass. General Law, Chapter 140. And again, our online record system, so this is actually a screenshot of our OpenGov system. So we're able to, in real time, look up a dog's licensing information, its licensing history, and we're able to follow up with that with owners, and it's the easiest way to expedite getting dogs home quickly and safely. And the public health benefits. So with, with dog licensing, it does require proof of a current rabies vaccine, and that helps to maintain statewide protection against a serious public health threat. Quick verification of a rabies vaccine status helps the need for costly post-exposure treatment and unnecessary quarantines. So one of the responsibilities of animal control falls on animal bites, and animal bite investigations and quarantines. So a lot of times, we're on scene for animal bites, and one of the first things a bite victim wants to know is, is that dog rabies vaccinated? Because it has serious health repercussions, repercussions for that individual. So if an animal is available for quarantine, we quarantine them for seven days, sorry, 10 days. They're monitored for symptoms of rabies, but oftentimes, if you can't provide proof of a rabies vaccine, or if there's a delay in any of that protocol, and the person is seeking medical attention, sometimes a medical professional wants them to go ahead and get that rabies post-exposure prophylaxis. So that's the rabies vaccine series that you get after a bite, if the animal can't be immediately identified as rabies vaccinated, or available for quarantine. It's very, it's very expensive, the vaccine series. It's uncomfortable. Your first vaccine goes directly into the wound, the immunoglobulin, and then it's a series of five rabies vaccines after that. So it's a lengthy process. Animal control can help prevent that. And again, if we have the rabies certificate on file for that dog, we're able to provide that information in real time to the person. Knowing a dog is rabies vaccinated also lowers the risks for animal control officers and first responders when we're arriving on the scene of an emergency. High compliance rates also ensure consistent rabies immunity in the town's dog population. And just to put a framework against, for rabies, because it's not something that the average person sees very often, but people in our field, we do see it often. In 2025, there were six human deaths caused by rabies in the United States, so that's actually an uptick in recent years. And to quote the CDC, in the U.S., around 4,000 animal rabies cases are reported each year. Ninety percent of those are in wildlife, which animal control does also respond to sick and injured wildlife, so we help mitigate those situations to hopefully prevent interaction between a potentially rabid wild animal, the public, or domestic animals. But it's a big change from the 1960s, when domestic animals, mainly dogs, represented most of the rabies cases. The decrease in human deaths is directly related to, to quote the CDC, "successful vaccination of pets and animal control programs, public health tracking and testing of human and animals' rabies cases, and the availability and use of rabies-related medical care, including the rabies post-exposure prophylaxis." And again, legal compliance, it is the law. So per the MGL, it's Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 141. There is a fine set by the state law for an unlicensed dog. So it is to be assessed a penalty of not less than $50, which is paid to the city or town where the violation occurred. And the nature of dog licensing and the violation, every day that the dog remains unlicensed is a new violation. So it's a continuing violation. So if somebody's dog is unlicensed today, remains unlicensed tomorrow, remains unlicensed the following day, each of those are a violation that a citation could be issued for in accordance with the law. So what does that mean for a resident? So by licensing, it helps avoid unnecessary enforcement actions. So if they get their dog licensed on time, they're not receiving a citation. Saves residents money by avoiding paying those citations and fines, and skips the hassle of court appeals for citations. So a $15 or $20 annual license keeps residents off of the enforcement lists. Noncompliance can lead to $50 plus in fines, which again, can be issued daily. And noncriminal citations can be appealed, but doing so requires the individual most likely to take time off from work. They're traveling to the Worcester Courthouse, spending time on paperwork, and all of that can be avoided with just renewing or applying for a dog license. So education versus enforcement. Our goal isn't to enforce the dog licensing. We would rather provide education to our residents, encourage them to license, and have voluntary compliance of the dog licensing requirement, because, again, a $15 or $20 dog license is going to save them time and hassle, and save the town time as well for having to issue all of the citations and go through the court process when we have to go and defend a citation that we issue. So our motto is "Inform, Assist, and Enforce If Needed." And some of the outreach and education that we do, again, all of the town census mailings include an application for a dog license, so that's sent to every household. We send email notifications through the licensing software system. So our new system with OpenGov does require an email address to be part of the account, so it's set up to send scheduled email reminders at the beginning of a licensing, beginning of the licensing year. So it's usually one month apart. The system automatically sends those. But apart from that, animal control historically has also sent email reminders to everybody in our database. We send either postcard or letter reminders out to everybody. Welcome letters get sent for new dogs in town. So it's a, it's not a state law, but it's a CMR, so a regulation for the state, that veterinarians must send a copy of a rabies certificate for a dog to the city or town where the dog lives. So that's how the town ends up finding out that there's a new dog in town or newly vaccinated town. So when we receive those rabies certificates from the veterinary clinic, we're sending welcome letters to the owners to inform them what the requirements are in Auburn, also to welcome the dog to town, but to educate them ahead of time for what their requirements are as a dog owner. And we've also done off-hours licensing booths at events that we've had as well, for any resident that might have difficulty coming in on a weekday, or might not have availability to the online system. And for an idea of licensing fees across Massachusetts, so I know the bar, the bar graph is very tight. That's because it's responses from 214 municipalities. It's a survey that was taken by the Massachusetts Town Clerk's Association. So the average of 43 towns that are similarly sized to Auburn, the average fee is around $10 to $20, variations in between there. So that kind of fits in line with Auburn's current licensing fees. We're seeing a trend that licensing fees are going up in a lot of towns. Auburn has not increased its dog licensing fees since 2014. And for some more information, a licensing increase does require a majority vote by town meeting. So our current fees, our $15 spayed and neutered licensing fee was voted on at town meeting in 2009, and the $20 intact fee was voted at town meeting in 2014. So we do have some additional fees, our late fees and our delinquency fees, but those are assessed differently than the increase for dog licensing. It doesn't have the same requirements. And just to put a framework around that, a $15 license is about $0.04 a day. A $20 license is about $0.05 a day. So why are the fees assessed? It is law. So under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 139, it allows municipalities to set a licensing fee, but it does have certain requirements, that an increase has to be accepted by a majority vote at town meeting, but it also states that there has to be two separate fees assessed. So you have to have one fee for intact dogs and a separate fee for spayed and neutered dogs. This was originally created to incentivize spaying and neutering and have responsible pet ownership, to help address pet overpopulation, but because of that wording, there does have to be a fee set. Because if the fees were both zero, you can't have a fee, the next fee less than zero. Overall, it supports the town budget. So these fees contribute valuable revenue to the town budget, helping to support a range of municipal programs, and historically, some of the funds have been used to supplement animal control. And it helps support administrative costs. So running a program does have costs directly associated to it. And for an idea of the breakdown of fees, the tags that are purchased typically run about $400. The updated mailers with the town census, that's about $1,200. The software itself, now that we've switched over to OpenGov to try to move all of our electronic permitting systems into one database, that's about $22,000, and that's per department. And then, the staff time it takes. So on average, to renew a dog license, it takes the town clerks typically around 10 minutes to go through the renewal process. Adding a new dog to the system can take a little bit longer, maybe up to 20 minutes if they're uploading all of the documents into the file. But we do have some options to waive fees. So in accordance with the MGL, so it falls under Chapter 140, Section 139, we are able to waive the fees for service dogs as they're defined under the American Disabilities Act. So Auburn actively does that. And in 2017, Animal Control and the Town Clerk's Office sponsored a warrant at town meeting to be able to waive fees for seniors in the town. So right now, we're able to allow one dog per household for a resident 70 or older to license at no, at no fee. And again, that's allowable through the MGL. It's very specific for where you can offer fee waivers. And if a resident doesn't own a dog, how do they benefit from the program? So dog licenses generate revenue that supports the general fund, and these funds are for function that support all town residents. So for an idea of the typical revenue that we see coming in from dog licenses, so it typically generates between $30,000 to $40,000 annually for the town. And as you can see with the data, in years when licensing, education can't be as dispersed as readily licensing, or it can't be enforced as strictly voluntary compliance declines. So if we're not sending reminders, the numerous reminders that we try to, we don't get licensing. So dating back to 2012, from 2012 to 2014, our licensing numbers fell down to around 1,200. Right now, we're licensing on average, I believe, right, just under 2,200 right now, and that's still lower than our actual number of dogs in town. It's hard to give an exact number for how many we have, but we have licensed up to 2,500. And I would say, our actual number for dogs in town probably falls between 27 over 3,000 dogs. So there's still a population that either remains not in compliance with licensing, or new dogs in town that we might not be aware of, but it brings in a significant amount of revenue to the town. And how does this help the town? So revenue generated from dog licenses helps support the general, the general fund, the town budget, and in turn, has supported the creation of an animal control department that has been recognized for its strengths and services across the state. So even if you don't own a pet, you may still interact with animals in your community. So while all residents might not utilize every service in town, we all pay towards having those services available. Similar to how residents without children pay towards the school system, residents without cars are paying towards supporting the roads, residents may never need direct services from police or fire, but they pay to support those town departments. How busy is animal control? So on average, animal control might receive anywhere between 1,200 to 2,000 calls annually. So that's a combination of physical calls for response, where somebody's going out into the field, or it could be educational outreach that the ACOs are providing, and that's during regular business hours and off-hours by on-call staff. So animal control is staffed 24/7, 365 days a year, so weekends, nights, holidays, we have somebody available for emergencies and to assist residents that need it. And how does it benefit the community? So community safety. Animal control responds to loose and aggressive or stray animals, or wildlife that could pose a risk to anyone, not just pet owners. Public health protection. Animal control helps to prevent the spread of rabies and other zoonotic diseases by managing stray animals, sick wildlife, and ensuring pets are vaccinated and licensed. This past year, there was a big uptick in avian influenza that affected many municipalities across the state. So animal control was overseeing the management of any suspect avian influenza cases that we had, making sure that proper PPE was provided to any town employees to reduce their risk for contraction of that or spread of it. So there's a lot of pieces that people might not see that animal control has a part in. Wildlife management. Animal control handles sick and injured wildlife, and wildlife that poses a threat of rabies exposure to residents and their pets. Some of those exposures may be obvious to the general population. If you touch a raccoon and the raccoon bites you, that's an obvious exposure. Waking up with a bat in your home, flying around your bedroom, many people don't recognize that, but that's an emergency for animal control, where we're typically going out in the middle of the night assisting a resident, because that animal has to be rabies tested to protect their health. The neighborhood quality of life. So addressing nuisance animals and enforcing town bylaws benefits everybody in the community. An emergency response. Animal control responds on scene at emergencies with our police department, fire department, and also assists state and federal agencies on scene. And with dangerous animals, animal control actively protects the community from dangerous dogs. So in animal control, we investigate reports of aggressive or dangerous dogs, document these incidents, and assess public safety risks, provides testimony during dangerous dog hearings, and ensures fair, evidence-based decisions for safer neighborhoods. Since 2018, animal control has participated in eight dangerous and nuisance dog hearings, and we also maintain a database with the information from all of those hearings, and we provide that to our emergency dispatch center, so they're aware when they arrive on scene if there's a potentially dangerous animal. And animal control provides vital assistance to the police department during animal cruelty investigations and subsequent prosecution efforts. In this past year alone, animal control has assisted in seven criminal animal cruelty investigations, providing critical subject matter expertise to the police department while providing professional networking assistance for complex cases. And support that strengthens our community. Through connecting our residents with low-cost services, we've been able to prioritize keeping pets at home with their families that love them, and avoiding those animals entering shelters. We've been able to achieve this by bringing mobile, low-cost vaccine clinics to town and assisting low-income residents with applications for free spay and neuters and other veterinary services. But when animals do require housing, we're there to help. So on average, animal control intakes about 100, plus or minus, animals a year. So there can be variations in that, sometimes closer to 80, sometimes it's been upwards of 120. So it fluctuates. And these animals come in for a variety of reasons. Some may be animals that wander from their home, some may be strays, some are extremely sick or injured and require emergency veterinary care, some are on safekeeping holds for their owners, some are housed through animal cruelty cases. But whatever the reason, we ensure that all the animals are treated with the love and dignity that they deserve. And so, the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound is our municipal animal shelter. So through the collection of animal control fees, or kenneling fees, the division has able to, been able to supplement some of the costs associated with basic animal care. So that helps cover pet food, veterinary care, and animal care supplies. However, it is a municipal, municipal building that dates back to the 1970s, and like any town facility, it does require ongoing heating, lightening, and lighting and maintenance. And these operational needs are supported through the general fund, just as they are for all municipal buildings. And oftentimes, the fees associated with animal care can exceed the funds annually budgeted. So animal control often deals with unpredictable costs in situations where animals require emergency medical treatment, or if the animal has an extended stay to us, which we often see with law enforcement cases, where animals require long-term care, because they're held as evidence as part of that case. And as a town facility, the shelter does rely on general fund support for the upkeep. Over the years, those investments have allowed us to make key improvements. So we've included some pictures of some of the renovations that have helped keep the shelter safe, functional, and in compliance with state sheltering regulations. So this will show you some views of the shelter over the years. So the image on your left is the kennel in 2015, and then to the right are some improvements that we made initially by cleaning the shelter out, repainting the walls in what's considered fear-free colors, so colors that are more neutral, that are a little more calming to an animal that's in the facility, and that is scientifically researched. We were able to seal the floors and give the kennel a deep clean that it needed. These are some views of our small animal room and cat room, where we were able to rearrange the room. animal room and cat room, where we were able to rearrange the room, work with what we had, and create a more usable space. In 2017, we started some of the major renovations. So we were able to replace the chain-linked kennels, replace them with separate, larger kennels that included FRP panels in between the chain-linked, in between each of the kennels to include some separation. Previously, the chain-linked dogs were able to go nose-to-nose. That's not great for disease control. There was only a center drain in the room, so anytime something was being hosed off, it was being squeegeed across into one spot, which again, not great for disease control. So we were able to put in a trench-drained system where during cleaning, you were able to push anything to the back of the run, so everything stayed maintained, and just created a calmer environment for the dogs in that area. And then our cat room, we were able to take the kennels, the existing cat cages that we had, rearrange them, add in some cabinets for storage that the kennel greatly needs, is more space and more storage. But again, working with what we had, we were able to make some great improvements. And then in 2021, we were able to redo the flooring system. So before, it was just concrete, and we tried internally using different sealants on it, but eventually those sealants failed. Concrete is porous, so that would hold on to urine smells, potential for disease spread. So we were able to get an epoxy, an epoxy system on the floor that we used throughout the kennel. And present day, just some images of inside of the shelter. So again, that's the small animal and cat room, and then some views of the hallway, the dog kenneling area, and just leading in from the hallway into the dog kenneling area. And so behind the scenes. So like I said, your animal control officers are on-call 24/7, 365, to support our residents and the animals in our community. As an emergency response resource, calls are answered at all hours of the day and night by our full-time, part-time, and on-call staff. Behind the scenes. Most of this work happens out of sight. You may never see its direct impact, but it makes a difference every day. So some of these images are from past cases that Animal Control has been a part of. The dog in this picture, he was named Kevin McAllister. He was picked up on Christmas Eve, I believe this was in 2018, found very emaciated, abandoned in a home. His body condition was scored a 1 out of 9. So he did have to spend time at Tufts, where he had to go on a refeeding plan to make sure that introducing food to him didn't make him sick. Because reintroducing food too fast can overwhelm their system and can actually cause organ failure and shut down. But that is an image of Kevin McAllister two months later, receiving consistent care and food from Animal Control, where he was later adopted. And then this is an example, a case that spanned decades, but through persistence, we were able to break the case. This led to the discovery of over 70 animals living in unsafe and unsanitary conditions. It remains one of the largest and most complex rescues involving animals in Auburn's history. So this case itself took a lot of planning to be able to, to be able to get into the property. It was an entire day dressed in full PPE, working inside of the home, being able to catch all of the loose cats in the basement and safely capture all of the dogs inside of the home. The home was later declared unfit for human habitation. The animals were part of that animal cruelty case. Some had to be held for a length of time because of, again, animals are evidence in animal cruelty cases. So they essentially stay in limbo where we can't move them forward, we can just provide care for them. So it does have expenses related to it. We can't physically house 60 animals at our municipal shelter, so it did also require working with our partners in animal welfare to be able to find additional placement for the animals during that timeframe while we worked through the court process to get them legally surrendered to the town. Again, in some cases, circumstances require animals to be held in our care for extended periods of time, sometimes lasting several months. This dog in the picture is one that people may have seen down at the kennel. For last November through earlier this year, we had several dogs from a case that, again, because of the legal system, they were caught in limbo, and we had to care for them, maintain them there while we were working to get a legal surrender from the owners. And many of these cases leave marks on us that linger long after the case is closed. So again, our work is dedicated to the safety, health, and the well-being of our community. I thank you for your time tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is a very thorough presentation. Thank you. How long did it take you to get this done?
Putting the presentation together, collecting all of the information, meetings related to this, and confirming some information with the state, it was probably 15 hours getting all of the information.
15? Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So going on into the agenda, let's see. Departmental items, DPW. We should have a board vote to execute abandonment of drainage easement for Commonwealth Ave. And Joanna, our DPW director is going to talk about that.
Good evening. So this is a drainage easement that was on the town meeting warrant for May, the annual town meeting, and it was approved. And it's, it's a little bit different than most easements. This is an existing easement that was put in place years ago. And the owner of the property approached us saying that, asking if the town would release part of the easement, because it doesn't really look like there's any use for it for the town. We looked at it, we looked at the infrastructure in the area, and we really didn't see any reason why that easement was so large. So we worked with the owner to determine the easement area that the town would need. That owner recorded the easement to the town that would be benefit to the town, and this would be the easement that the town would release.
So it's a reduction in the size of the easement?
Correct.
Any questions?
So I just have one question, not necessarily about the easement itself, just the jurisdiction. Similar to the easement that we signed for at the last meeting. I believe Town Meeting is the legal authority to either accept or discharge easements, and the Select Board's jurisdiction is just to sign off on the easement once Town Meeting takes a vote. So I don't know that it requires us to take action other than adding our signature.
Through the chair, I had a quick conversation with Town Council. He just said that just to be safe, he recommended a vote. When we submitted the easement for the previous easement, for the National Grid, sorry, that was already, the wording was already provided, and that was known. This was drafted recently. So just to make sure that it was advertised and basically just making sure that all of our Ts are crossed, Is are dotted.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I will make a motion to execute the abandonment and release of easement for Commonwealth Avenue, as was passed by the voters at the May 6, 2025 Annual Town Meeting.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now, we have another DPW item, a board vote to designate Joe Fahey as a special municipal employee per Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20, for the purposes of snow removal. Do you want to tell us about that?
Sure. Every once in a while, we'll come to the board to ask for an employee to be voted, a special town employee for snow plowing purposes. It allows us to have another piece of our equipment used for snow plowing. It's definitely cost-saving to the town, and this is a great way for us to be able to utilize Mr. Fahey, just because currently, he's part-time, so he's available a lot more hours than most of our other employees.
When it comes to snowplowers, are we fully staffed?
So the DPW has three people on leave, and then there's a vacancy. So we have four people that are missing from the DPW, in addition to the fact that right now, we have 12 private plowers that we have on contract. We hope to have 14, 15, so we're close. But it's just, it's not ideal, but we always work with what we have. We try to advertise, try to get as much people as possible, but sometimes it's a little difficult just because private plowers sometimes have trouble with getting certifications from the insurance company. There's requirements that the town requires that it's a little bit more stringent than just plowing a driveway.
What does the town pay?
Currently, the town pays $105 an hour for a private.
You say 110?
100. Let me just double-check.
105, okay.
105. We went up to, yes, 105 for a small pickup.
Thank you.
Just hearing that we have certain requirements, are our requirements any more stringent than other towns? And are we looking at what those requirements are if people aren't applying or trying to plow for the town, like any leeway or movement, or any risk if we were to reassess what those requirements are?
I don't believe so. It's basically, we need to have the flower provide us with a certificate of insurance. And it's...
I just want to make sure we're not the issue. If they can't get insurance, I don't want them doing that either, but I want to make sure that we're allowing people that are qualified to do it.
It's my understanding that it depends on the, we've had conversations recently with some plowers, and some insurance companies charge much more than others for that certificate.
Yes, through the chair. From our research, we found many municipalities are in the same exact position. I went home during the snowstorm last week, and there's a huge sign on Park Ave for snowplowers in Worcester. And I know they pay more than we do, not much more, but they do pay more. So we do outreach through Indeed. We get quite a few people that are interested, but they, a lot of them live too far away. So we monitor that daily to try to bring it up to a full complement. That's why it's important to be able to have a special employee designation, so we can use the people that we have that work for us already.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may. So, one, I was just to echo what the town manager said. In my day job in municipality, I know that many municipalities, not just in this area, but really throughout the state, are facing the similar issues of hiring. Not only is the insurance more costly, the equipment is costly, the maintenance as well. And given the amount of snowstorms we've been having, which is getting, though the severity is sometimes increasing, the amount each year is getting less and less. It's becoming less cost-effective for those companies to keep employees on or outfit their trucks or insure their trucks. I know even, and the added concern for municipalities is, you're also competing with mass DOT, who are seeking contractors as well and can afford to pay a lot more. So not only are we battling the city of Worcester, we're then battling District 3 with mass DOT for contractors. That being said, I'm very supportive of this. I did just want to take a minute, especially hearing that you were down for employees, to commend yourself, Mr. Fairbanks, and your department's response in the last storm. Considering that you were down contractors and down employees, you had a great response. The streets were plowed, they were sanded in a timely manner. So I just want to commend our DPW on that response. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have a great team. All of our employees are very diligent, and yeah, they're coming in, you know, just as soon as we call them, and very concerned about the safety of everybody on the road. So I'm very grateful to them.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Sure.
I'm certainly supportive of this action, but Mr. Fahey is a retiree, and he's already working a certain number of hours. My only concern is, my understanding is, there's a limitation per year to what a retiree can do. Is that, who's keeping track of that, I guess, is those hours so that we have coverage?
I was going to say, having worked at a retirement agency, I can tell you that each retiree is responsible for tracking their own hours and earnings, and finding out the number of hours they can earn and the dollar amount per year.
I'm just worried that he may go over it, because he's already working a certain number of hours in a regular job. So, and my understanding is, you know, when you're out, you're out for a long period of time. So that's my concern, is that he may exceed his time, and then we won't have him as a resource. But...
Through the chair. Sorry. We've had that conversation, and based on the number of hours, it didn't look like he was going to exceed. I'm sure hopeful that we're not going to exceed that many hours out on the road plowing, but it seemed like a large number to reach for just plowing. Mr. Fahey wouldn't be working for us when we're stalling, so it was just that plowing event portion.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to designate Joe Fahey as a special municipal employee per Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20, for the purposes of snow removal.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, he's all set. Thank you. Thanks, Joanna. All right, next on our agenda, we're going to look at Select Board General Items, 8. 8A, we're all set? No, 8C. Going to take a board vote on change of manager application for Auburn Sportsman's Club at 50 Elm Street, Auburn, Mass. And we have someone from the Auburn Sportsman's Club present today. Would you like to, you could go to the podium, or you could just sit right up here, whatever works for you?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Cheryl McNally, and I was recently elected by the Auburn Sportsman's Club to become the bar manager. It's been a lot of fun learning all the new systems, and, but I would like the approval of the board, of course.
Okay, do we have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager application for Auburn Sportsman's Club, 50 Elm Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All set, thank you.
Thank you. May I be excused? I have a board meeting.
Oh, you're all set.
You're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Item 8D, a board vote on a one-day beer and wine license application for the Auburn Chamber of Commerce annual Christmas party at Packagog Church, 203 Packagog Street in Auburn. We have someone from the chamber here. Come on up. You can go to the podium or just have a seat here and just identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Cunningham. I sit on the Board of Directors for the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. Good evening. And yes, we're holding our annual holiday party at Packagog Church tomorrow.
So we have the application in here. Does anyone have any questions? No questions? Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Auburn Chamber of Commerce annual Christmas party at Packagog Church, 203 Packagog Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license.
So we have a motion and a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to excuse myself.
I'd like to make a motion, considering the amount of charitable work that the Auburn Chamber of Commerce does to support our town and our school department and our community as a whole, I'd like to move that we waive the fee for this license.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? All set. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, continuing, we're going to take some board votes to file and accept grant applications. So, our Assistant Town Manager, Paul Delacquilla, is here. Director of Economic Development, Assistant Town Manager. Why don't you come on up, Paul? Have a seat right up here, okay? Thank you. You're going to tell us about these three grants, and then we'll vote on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to sit up here anyway, because everyone's sat at the podium so far. I figured I'd break, break the pattern here. So, yes, I'm here tonight, I know there's some information in your packets, but I'm here tonight to speak about three grants. I'm going to take them in turn. The first one I'm going to speak about is a DLTA District Local Technical Assistance Application to CMRPC. This would be for developing a permitting, Development and Permitting Guide, that would, would bring together all our processes, everything from building, planning, zoning, conservation, animal control probably as well, at this point. But it was to have it all in one place. It'd be a useful tool, because we can have it online, we can have people print it, we can have it as a handout. And it would dovetail nicely with our DCG, our Development Coordination Group, just to be able to inform, whether it's a small contractor, or a small individual, or a bigger firm. This is what, this is what you can do in Auburn. And it's, the idea is, not to just make it pretty, pretty graphic, but to, to make it user-friendly, and to, you know, begin to cultivate the, the image of Auburn being easy to work with, and being able to provide all the information upfront. So, one of the benefits of this particular, and actually all of these have the same benefit, we don't have to provide any matching funds or any dollars upfront, other than the staff time involved with submitting the application, and ultimately, having some of the meetings if we're successful. So, my recommendation, my opinion, this is a kind of a no, I don't want to say no-brainer, that's the wrong term. But this is a pretty low-hanging fruit option that we can do as we, as we begin to want to streamline our development processes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Just, just one question. I know they're going to be putting together a guide. Can, as part of the scope, can they also look at our website, and making the guide available on our website, but also possibly making our website a little more user-friendly when it comes to permitting and licensing?
Absolutely. Again, we'll be coordinating with DDIS, Economic Development, with me, and, and planning. So, we'll, we'll make sure that all those pages and all those documents are speaking to each other.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to issue a letter of commitment, LOC, along with the DLTA Grant Application for Development and Permitting Guide to the CMRPC.
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, that one's all set.
Right, thank you.
Number two?
Number two, another DLTA application to CMRPC. This would be for Hazard Mitigation Plan Assistance. This is a slightly less of a scope than the previous one, but this is frequently, CMRPC will coordinate projects through the year, working with communities who might have recently done a master plan, or in this case, done hazard mitigation plan. So, this is a way for them to get funded, to come back to us, having just completed and got a plan certified last year, to be able to come look at implementation, have meetings with staff, look for grant opportunities. Again, this is very, even less of an involvement on town-staff end for this. But again, I think it's, it would help, if we have these plans, my, my inclination is we try to implement those plans. And so, hopefully, this grant would help us do that, as far as the hazard mitigation goes. So, similarly, it would require a letter of, a letter of commitment from the town.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Not so much a question, just a comment. I love the comment that you just made. One of the things I've said a million times is, we have great plans, now we need to actually implement them. So, I'm glad to see that's taking place.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to issue a letter of commitment, LOC, along with the DLTA Grant Application for the Hazard Mitigation Implementation Assistance Program to the CMRPC.
So, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that's all set. Thank you.
Thank you again.
And last, sir?
So, the last one's a little, it's a bit, a bit different, and potentially more, more exciting, I think, for the town. Early on, when I started here, the town manager and I met with folks from Mass Development, and M O B D, Mass Office of Business Development. And we began to cultivate a good relationship with them. They, in fact, reached out to us, Mass Development, to, about this grant opportunity. And what it is, it's a, it's called, it's the U L I TAP group, Urban Land Institute, the Boston chapter. They annually do projects around the state, where they assemble consultants in different fields, whether it be transportation, development, architecture, a number of different disciplines. And they basically do a one-day intensive workshop in a community, work focused around a particular issue. I know they've done, recently, projects, there's projects in Worcester they've done recently, and other towns in the area as well. The idea of this would be to focus on the Route 12 corridor, starting from the Yankee Drummer Langway site, sort of in the southern end of the corridor we identified, bring it all the way up to the mall. Looking at opportunities to, for each of those sites individually, but also for the territory in between. Obviously, there's a number of vibrant businesses there already, but there's also some, a couple of pieces of vacant property. And we always want to look for ways to leverage what we already have, make the, make the corridor more productive, more attractive. But in particular, get some ideas from experts from outside the community about some ways we could, you know, crack those tough nuts of, you know, doing some more things at the mall site potentially, or in particular, the Langway site. So, this, if we were successful, this would involve a workshop. The intensive one-day workshop would be happened sometime in the spring. That's a TBD, so it's a sort of later spring, depending on weather and things like that. They would come here, you know, eight in the morning, they would meet with various town staff and members of the, of the, of the, of the community. And then they would come make a presentation to this board at the end of the day. So, it's a really interesting opportunity. And again, the, the other benefit is, is Mass Development has offered to be our sponsor for this. If we were doing this ourselves, we would have to be coming up with $15,000 to do it. But zero is better than 15,000, I think, when we're applying for this. So, I just think, again, a great opportunity, a great opportunity to coordinate different pieces in the community, and hopefully come up with, I know we've done a lot of work in that area already, but get some interesting perspectives on how we can tie some of those things together.
Sounds good. Questions?
Again, I, I know there's a long way to go on this, but obviously, there's a lot of different property and a lot of different ownership. Are there going to be multiple plans? Like, cohesively, this would be the best plan of action, but individually, these would take place? Because my, my fear is, not that we're not planning properly, but that we can't move forward, because the plan is too robust. So, like, is, are there opportunities to break sections out of the best use of this property, or these properties, and then identify partnerships, because we don't own the land, but just...
My understanding, through the chair, my understanding is that we get to tailor what the ask is. It's not simply, say, they're not going to come in and just start studying the project without coming to us. They're going to meet with town staff, they're going to meet with town leadership. And so, we can have them focus on those things. In particular, I, I'm, I'm interested to hear about, like you said, mentioned, public partnerships, but also different funding opportunities that might exist. Looking at different financial instruments that we could use to, you know, catalyze some development in this corridor. Now, again, this is probably, this won't be, this is not going to be a parcel-by-parcel analysis. And, you know, it's only a one-day workshop, so there's only so much they can do in a given period of time, which is why we want to focus on sort of the large sites, especially the vacant site. So, but yes, I think it's, it's, this is meant to be, it's meant to stimulate ideas, but it's meant to be something that's implementable.
Madam Chair, if I may. Can I just ask that, as part of that sort of one-day, they also meet with the members or members who are interested from the Economic Development Committee as well, seeing as though this is sort of the stuff that we're hoping them to tackle as well. And I would just ask the chair and the town manager that, when they are presenting to us, that we make sure that we, we extend an invite to the members of that committee, so they can hear the presentation. I'm really excited about this. One of the things that, that, while I appreciate the employment they bring, and the taxes they pay, to see our major development be a bank next to a bank, three doors down from another bank, is really, I don't think the best use of what people want to see on Route 12, as well as in the heart of Jersey Square. So, I'm hopeful that, as well as a half-empty mall. I'm, I'm hopeful that, that this sort of kickstarts us to getting, bringing in, creating the vision, and to, and then executing on bringing in new property uses and new businesses. Thank you.
Just through the chair, quickly, I am meeting, we don't have an Economic Development Committee member identified yet, because I'm meeting with them on Thursday. So, I did not want to designate anyone outside of a meeting. Similarly, actually, we, one of the asks here as well to this board, is if there's a member on this board who would be willing to be, I mean, will be part of the, obviously, part of the presentation at the end of the day. But there's an opportunity, if there was a member of this board who might want to participate in the, in the, shall we say, the preliminaries of that day.
Madam Chair, on that, on that note, if it's not too much to ask, if Mr. Chambers would be available and willing to participate. I know with your professional background as a project manager for a Fortune 100 company, this is sort of right up your alley, and bring in expertise that I don't think the other four members will bring for that.
So, I'm certainly willing to do it. I don't know, scheduling-wise, how that, my availability for that. But certainly would make the effort to attend and be part of that.
And also to the, to the chair, we are identifying a number of individuals, staff, and community members in this application, but it's not, that is not meant to be definitive and immutable. If, if, as things might, you know, things might change as we go along, we might add people as we go. But the, we, we were told that they want to demonstrate a, a good cross-section of community support. So, that was, that was some of the thinking there.
Good, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So, I'll make a motion to apply to the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Program, and to designate Stephen Chambers as the member of the host committee group.
So, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so continuing, we are looking at item eight F. The board vote on expiration dates for licenses granted on November 24, 2025. That was at our last meeting. The board voted to grant these licenses, but as licenses normally expire on December 31st, for instance, of this year, 2025, it'd be appreciated if the board could explicitly stipulate that these licenses expire on December 31st of 2026. That would negate the need for these businesses to be issued license, only to have them immediately have to reapply for 2026. Okay, any questions?
I thought we already had done that.
Yeah.
I thought that was part of the conversation. So, explicitly calling it out as written, I have no issues with.
Good. So, we do need a couple of motions. Let's be better safe than sorry.
So, I will make a motion to modify the Common Vic Killer License for Sunrise and Subs at 385 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, granted on November 24, 2025, to stipulate an expiration date of December 31, 2026.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and the next?
I just have a discussion point on this one. I know that, I believe I brought it up for this one, but the argument was that it's an existing business. So, since it was just a change of, I believe it was just a, it was an existing business already, so that we didn't think it should be extended. But I'm, I'm happy to extend it. I wanted to do it last time. I just want to make sure that I'm remembering it correctly.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do the motion, please?
Oh, Mr. Chambers had a comment.
Oh, question?
No, I, I think that was my concern before. I, I think they were delinquent in their application, which is why we didn't want to waive this one, because they should have done it already. They didn't. So, extending them gives them a free year. I believe that was the case with this one.
This is the Jiffy Lube, which, which is...
It was not that one. It is Jiffy Lube. It's a different one than what you're talking about. Yep.
Mr. Chambers' point, this is an existing business that Jiffy Lube took over. So, where the prior person came in, I would agree with Mr. Chambers that we should not extend this, because this was an existing business that has a license. So, they should be paying again.
If I may, I believe the Common Vic is tied to the ownership.
It's a repair license.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's the repair.
It's the other repair license.
No, it's fine with the other one, because he just, literally just came in, but...
But is this not the, the Jiffy Lube, which is, has been the standing Jiffy Lube on Southbridge Street? I believe this is the same building. It's just a change...
Of ownership.
Of ownership, because...
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's an existing business.
If I may, through the chair, it, they did apply on November, it came before you on November 24th, and they paid. The request is to not have them pay again. They're paying in November, and then now they'd have to pay again for next year.
So, because there was a change in ownership, they have to reapply for, for a license?
Yes. Yes.
So, so before them changing the ownership, they were up to date, the previous owners were up to date with their license?
That is correct.
Okay. So, it's not, so it's, are we good? Okay. I will make a motion to modify the auto repair license for MC LLC DBA Jiffy Lube Number 884 at 746 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, granted on November 24, 2025, to stipulate an expiration date of December 31, 2026.
So, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. So, now we're looking at eight G. We're going to vote to approve the 2026 license renewals with conditional vote to approve licenses that are submitted with no issues by December 31st. Do I make any comments, Ms. Vecchio, on this?
Yes, through the chair, this is standard request to the Board of Selectmen every December to vote on these license renewals that are, that expire as of December 31st. There are a few that we're still working with, that we anticipate will have their paperwork in by December 31st, which is why we're requesting that you allow us to, as long as there's no issues or problems with them, to approve those as well.
Okay, any questions?
So, I, I know you mentioned a few. Do we have a, a number of, how many? And is there a non-renewal notification? Someone decides they don't want to renew, are we notified, or we just find out because they didn't submit their paperwork?
Through the chair, often, sometimes they notify us. Other times, Caitlin in our office actually calls every business and company. If she doesn't speak to someone, she'll leave a message, and she definitely calls back again. So, she speaks to someone in each business, whether they tell us or not. We do everything we can to make sure they understand that their, their business license is expiring as of December 31st. And I can vouch for the fact they come in every single day.
Questions?
Maybe it's not for here, but is this the best time of year to do it? I know we do a fiscal budget year. Is it beneficial to move the dates of these, so they split the year? Or, again, we run into the holiday season, and people are doing their year-end or whatever. I don't know what the level of output from businesses is, if it's beneficial to move, or if there's statutory reasons to, to keep it.
Through the chair, I can look into that for you. It's customarily always been December 31st, but that doesn't mean we can't look and see if there's a possibility to move it, to do, you know, a different...
If there's a benefit. Again, I don't know.
Right.
You're talking about changing it to be fiscal year instead of calendar year?
And we'd have to look at the MGL and see what the requirement is. I do believe it's calendar year for that, but we can definitely look into it.
Any other questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 license renewals received as of December 8, 2025, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said licenses are subject to all the conditions stated upon them. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the licenses and render them null and void, with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the licenses.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we have another motion to make also.
I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the 2026 license renewals submitted between December 9, 2025, and December 31, 2025, with no barriers to issuance, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said licenses are subject to all conditions stated upon them. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the licenses and render them null and void, with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon said licenses.
Great, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Our next item is item nine, Town Manager Items. You can tell us about the 2026 Citizens Leadership Academy schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair. In my short few... Thank you. Through the Chair, in my short few months as actual Town Manager, it has become very clear to me that this board was interested in doing another Citizens Leadership Academy. I believe in it wholeheartedly. I think the more that we can educate the people within our community about what we actually do, that it's a benefit for everyone. So we are starting 13 sessions, starting March 5th to May 28th. It's going to be weekly, every Thursday from 6:00 to 8:30. We have an agenda with all the departments and the flyer that will be going out after this meeting, that will be getting out social media and sending it out to interested parties. I actually would like to also send it out to Beth at the School Department to see if maybe we can interest some of the high school students that are near graduation, or even juniors, to get them more involved in their community and understanding how government works. So I'm very pleased to present this to you. I think it's a great opportunity for our residents to participate in what we do. The schedule is final at this point, and all department heads are ready to start this education process, so.
Great. How many, how many seats are there?
We gave the cap the last time I gave the cap at 20, but we didn't, I think realistically we did go up to 25.
Okay, so between 20 and 25. Okay, any questions?
I just have one, I'm very supportive of this. I'm happy to see a return. I just have one question. One of the requirements is that they have to pass a quarry check? Are they going into any sensitive buildings? I know they're going to the middle school, but is that going to be when children are present? Or, I'm just wondering why we have that requirement that they have to pass a quarry check?
I do believe there's a few different locations that they'll be going into. I know the schools is one. They're also going into some municipal buildings where there'll be residents present, whether it's the library, or the senior center, Town Hall, where there may be children present as well. And I think it's something that we've done in the past and never had an issue, and we don't want to run into any problems or concerns with anything that could come up in this type of process.
So it's just an insurance safeguard, basically?
It is.
Has there been any consideration around small social media postings of some of the activities that will be discussed or learned about and how we market that?
Absolutely. In fact, there are some areas that were very, people were very interested in last time. We're going to market them even more, and some of it was like sewer pump stations. You wouldn't necessarily think that someone would be interested in that, but they are extremely interested, and people like to go see it. And it's that mechanical type thing that people like to see, and going to the library, it's almost like a field trip. So we will be breaking this apart and getting the word out in different things that we'll be doing so that we can try to get an audience that's interested in some portion of this.
Thank you.
Do you, for the people that choose to attend, do you have to attend all of the sessions, or is there going to be separate?
We encourage people to attend all sessions, but we're not going to penalize someone if they don't.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing this. I did go through it. I know other select board members in the past have gone through it, and I learned a lot. So I think it's a great opportunity for people to see, much like we got tonight with the dog license, see what actually happens, and it's not a, you know, what are you doing with the tax revenue? They now have an understanding of, A, how much it costs, they get to look at where some of our employees work, you know, the real limitations that some of these buildings present for them to be able to provide services to the town. So I think it's a great, great service, and like I said, I enjoyed it. This was a number of years ago now, but I look forward to hearing some stories from the new one.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on. We're looking at tabled items. 10A, the Board Votes on Schedules of Fees and Schedules of Fines. So we have first the Annual Board Vote on Schedule of Fees. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make some comments before we, have a discussion before we make a motion. So, one, I want to thank you for the presentation. I'm glad that my questions led to that presentation and bringing you back to Town Hall. It's a lot of great information. I want to make it very clear that the work of the Animal Control and the department, fully supportive of that, you guys are an important part of our community. And my concern is not necessarily on dog licenses per se. They're the best example of this, and that's, I'm a big supporter of user fees or service fees for municipality. If you're getting something, an extra service provided to you outside of what the normal community gets, then I believe you should pay a user fee for that service. Trash, sewer fees, trash fees, water fees, et cetera, that others do not partake. With respect to the dog licensing, even building permits. So with a building permit, you get inspection of the building, you get, make sure it's built to code. There's sort of those follow-up, that's specific to you applying for that service. With dog licensing, outside of the, you know, getting the tag for your dog, outside of that, there's no special service that the dog owner is specifically receiving for that, for that service, that they are paying a license fee for. And given that, just like the School Department, just like the police, just like the Fire Department, as we heard today, Animal Control is providing a large service that should be supported through tax revenue and not a specific user fee. Despite all of that, I had looked into Mass. General Law as well, and it was verified in this presentation, is that Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 139, says that this board has no jurisdiction over dog licensing fees. It's Town Meeting that sets the dog licensing fees. So this should not even be before us for a vote tonight for dog licensing. All the other license fees on here are under our jurisdiction. This one specifically is under Town Meeting's jurisdiction, so it should not even be included in the vote we're taking. Despite my objection to the dog licensing fee, this is Town Meeting's jurisdiction, and I'm up here all the time, you know, railing against people usurping the Board's jurisdiction. I'm not going to then sidestep and try to usurp the Town Meeting's jurisdiction. So when we take this vote, I think that the dog license has to be excluded from that vote. Because again, we have no jurisdiction to vote on it. It's Town Meeting's jurisdiction. Town Meeting has taken their vote. They've established this fee, and if anybody wants to remove it, including myself, I need to go to Town Meeting, file a warrant article to do that.
Through the Chair, I found that out myself through this process. I was under the impression it was any increase in fee would have to go to Town Meeting, but I definitely agree that it's, it definitely has to do with a Town Meeting versus the Board of Selectmen. I do believe these are voted every year through the Board of Selectmen, but I can definitely take it off.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that it probably was just included in all the fees in previous years, and nobody bothered to look at Mass. General Law to see that we don't have the jurisdiction to vote on it, similar to...
We all did this week.
Can I, I have a question then.
Yep.
If the licensing fee is voted on by Town Meeting, which I'm perfectly fine with, not voting on that, is the late fee also something that is voted by Town Meeting, or something that we would take as a...
No, that's something that we can vote on was the late fee. And I just want to specify, I agree with dog licensing. I realized recently, my dogs are not licensed, so I went and registered them and paid my late fee. And I did so willingly, I did so happily, because the reason why we're licensing them is a very good reason for public health, and the late fee is the incentive for you to do it on time. So I'm perfectly fine with late fees to incentivize, you know, complying with the law, as well as the fines.
I think it was clear that without a fee or a late fee, people aren't going to do it. And I, as a resident of Town, don't want someone else's dog to give me rabies, so I want the fee there to ensure compliance. We're not making money on it, as outlined every step of the way. It cost the Town more to manage this, but I want to ensure compliance. So if there's another way to ensure compliance, then we can certainly fight the state to remove some of those fees, but we need to make sure that compliance is there. So whether it's a fee, a late fee, increasing fees, I support all that, because six cases of rabies, even if it's an uptick, is a lot better than what they used to get.
All right.
Yeah, on the wider, again, I'm the reason why this was held, on the wider issue of the fee schedule, two concerns, or one statement, one concern. I want to be very clear, in the presentation, it mentioned several times about the revenue generated by the fee going to support the general fund, going to support other programs. There's clear statutes that came through the courts, specifically Emerson v. the City of Boston in 1984. After Two and a Half went in, and revenue started to, municipal revenue started to be capped, municipalities started getting really inventive in creating new fees. And the city, and Emerson University sued the City of Boston in 1984 for a fee, over a fee, and this Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court ruled that for a municipality to charge a fee, it could only be reimbursing the full cost of providing that specific service or fee. So you can add in the employee cost, you can add in the software, you can add in the tags, you can add in even the benefits of the employee based on the hourly that they make, but you cannot cap that. It cannot be an extra revenue source. If it is, it was considered a tax, and it was thrown out. And the City of Boston and other municipalities lost that court case and had, and again, that ruling came down. So when we look at these fees, we need to make sure that we are only recouping the cost of providing that service. We're not making money. It's not going to the general fund to support other programs. My thing with, and this is, and the reason why I asked this to be held last time, is that a lot of these were not necessarily large dollar increases, but they were large percentage increases on the fees. And when I met with the Town Manager in my one-on-one, we discussed this, and what came to light is that a lot of these fees have not been updated in over a decade. So we were not keeping up with the cost of providing these services. And it's best practice in municipalities that every two to three years, you review all of your fees, you review the costs, and you make incremental changes, so it's not such a baseball bat over the head to the people that are using this, and the residents and the businesses that have to pay these fees. So I understand why we're increasing them now. I'm glad we're increasing them now to recoup those actual costs. My concern is that following two, actually three years, I believe now, at going to the top 2.5% increase in the taxes, the Two and a Half, we're now also increasing the fees percentage-wise, some of them rather dramatically. This is a lot to place on our residents and our businesses right now, especially in times that are not the most stable economically with inflation, with cost of living, and cost of doing business. So I would like to know the possibility of, and again, I'm not talking about fines. Fines are, if you fail to follow the law, you get slapped, and you should get slapped, a lot more than what we're charging for fines, some of them. But for the fees, is it possible to take the sting off by increasing some of these only 50% now and 50% next year? That way, we're catching up to where we are, but it's not all coming at one hit.
If I can, through the Chair, just to clarify, the schedule of fees and the schedule of fines, the first two pages of the book, there are no changes in those fees and fines, on those two. The changes are on the next items where we talk about building fees and plumbing fees. So I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. Thank you. Okay.
Well, those are, we would vote on in some separate motions, right?
I just wanted, I just figured since we're talking about fees right now in general, I would just provide those comments so that when we get to the building fees, or the plumbing permit fees, or the electrical wiring fees, those types of things that we can consider at that time.
These are not typically reoccurring fees. These are project-based, so you're not doing a project or delaying a project based on the fee. And we're already deficient in fee schedules for many years, so delaying it isn't going to solve or stop or enhance a project. It's really going to provide staff with more resources to help check on and make sure that the properties are being inspected and doing things that we, although currently do, we're doing at a disservice for those non-users. So I think increasing the fees in this time, while not ideal, should be done.
One, we do have businesses that, small businesses that provide services that have to pull building permits and construction permits and electrical permits, and they do pay that fee multiple times based on their projects. The other thing is, is that, although it's, I lost my train of thought, but basically, the, I don't think anyone is suggesting, and maybe I'm wrong, that we are going to be adding extra employees as the basis, you know, we're not giving extra resources to our existing employees. We're not giving them more employees, you know, to do inspections, not giving them additional software, or vehicles, or et cetera. We're basically just playing catch-up on the current employees we have, the work they're doing, and the cost of that. So by increasing these fees, we're not giving them more resources. If we were, I would argue, oh, if I could get, you know, the Building Department extra employees by raising these fees, I would do it tomorrow.
If I can, through the Chair, you're absolutely right, except that we did last year start a brand-new software program called OpenGov that makes the permitting process so much easier. This should have probably been done prior to that, because that cost is, it's very expensive. And it's, it's a program that you heard we use for animal control, the Clerk's Office uses it. We're hoping to get assessing to use it, but it's a very big part of our Building Department. And all the permits, the licenses, the electric permits that they issue, the building permits, all of that, all go through OpenGov, and it provides an online portal for the person who's asking for the permit, and also the follow-up and the response. And I had a meeting this, just this week, about a case, and it was great, because I had the OpenGov pages and pages of the correspondence back and forth. And it's the first time I've seen that and saw, now I'm heading into a meeting, I know exactly what's going on. So it is brand-new. It just, I believe, started last July. There's been a few growing pains because we had a change in staff, but it is a great program that is, is a benefit to our taxpayers and to us.
And again, delaying the fee delays future enhancements to that program as well, not just that one, but we've talked about deficiencies in technology for many years. So again, delaying that, and again, I'm not looking to add staff, but it allows them the time and resources. And again, there was an issue, the ability to go back and find that information, instead of have to rifle through 800 pages of notes, provides that efficiency, which provides a better service, however the Board wants to go. But I suggest we continue as presented.
I just have one point, because I know when we broached this last meeting, I think it was, we did discuss the opportunity to perhaps delay the implementation to like February so that we can get ahead of this and give people an opportunity to be aware. So I don't know if Board members would like to consider adopting this, and then advertising the, you know, not putting it into effect immediately until, say, February, and publicizing the changes in fees so that we can, you know, at least give the public an opportunity to, you know, you might be doing a project, you might be wrangling with your financial lending institution, and you have a budget, and now this could potentially put that outside of your reach. So to me, I would be in favor of delaying the implementation, but adopting the recommendation... but adopting the recommendation of the department, but say, you know, not take it into effect until the end of February or something and give the town the opportunity and the public the opportunity to adjust their budgets and be aware that we're making changes.
By May, through the chair, that's definitely something we can do. And start getting out an educational campaign and look at instituting this in the next few months.
I would recommend March 1st rather than the end of a month, the beginning of a month.
Well, I would make a motion, see that we're not necessarily on three, four, or five, but on item number 10A1, annual board vote on schedule of fees. I'd vote that we approve the 2025-2026 schedule of fees, omitting our approval for the 19 license fee, but retaining its presence on the fee schedule for the public's awareness that there is a fee.
Great. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I hear a motion next to approve the 2025-2026 schedule of fees as presented?
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2025-2026 schedule of fines as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So we are now looking at the updated building fees. Do I hear a motion to approve the proposed building permit, building permit fees as presented with an implementation date of March 1st, 2026?
Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the updated building fees as presented to take effect as of March 1, 2026.
So the motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And do we have a motion to approve the proposed plumbing and gas permit fees as presented with an implementation date of 3/1, 2026?
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed plumbing and gas permit fees as presented with an effective date of March 1, 2026.
Second.
So the motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
And item 10A5, do I hear a motion to approve the proposed electrical and wiring permit fees as presented with an implementation date of March 1st, 2026?
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed electrical, wiring, and permit fees as presented with an effective date of March 1, 2026.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
All right, continuing, we're going to look at some member items. We're into discussion and possible board vote to open and set the closing date of the annual town meeting warrant at our meeting on December 29th or January 12th, whichever comes first. Dan, you want to talk about it?
Yes, so I know we had talked about it as board members in the past as to trying to increase the awareness of annual town meetings, making sure that individuals aren't waiting till the last minute or becoming unawares that the deadline is obviously late March usually. So it would make sense, at least by my reasoning, that we open the warrant in January because the annual town meeting is a fixed date. We know when we need to mail things. We know when we have to do that, and we can get out a education campaign early. And it also gives the boards and commissions an opportunity, you know, in the past, our managers have always said, well, everybody knows this. Well, you know it, but you don't necessarily keep it front of mind. So if there are things that our boards and commissions are interested in doing, and they may have done some work, but weren't, you know, aware or thinking of presenting it at a town meeting, it would just be helpful to get them out front at the beginning of the year saying, look, you know, annual town meeting is, I think it's May 19th this year, Ginger can correct me if I'm wrong, but town meeting is two weeks before that. So it's important, and the mail dates and all that other happy stuff should be disseminated to board members and be made aware to the public so that they can be prepared and come in and talk to the various and assundry town staff to make sure that when they are presenting, that their, you know, proposals are in good legal form and that they are aware of the task ahead of them.
Ginger, our town clerk, wants to update us on some dates.
Through the chair, the town meeting is actually the first Tuesday in May, which is May 5th. The town election is the third Tuesday in May, which is the 19th.
I thought I said town election, but maybe I misspoke. Thank you, though. I knew you would know that. But that's the reason behind wanting to open it as early as possible so that both residents and our committees, boards, and commissions have ample evidence and time to do their due diligence and be prepared for annual town meeting.
I do have a question. So while I support the extra time for a resident, should they want to make any article requests, how long do we, how early do we open the warrant for special town meetings? I would, I would want it to be something similar only because I wouldn't want somebody to think they have all of this extra time if we have a special town meeting and it turns out that they missed a deadline in that regard. And four months seems like a really long time, and I'm not opposed to four months. But if we're only opening the warrant for like two months for a special town meeting, I would, I would like them to be the same.
Difference between a special town meeting and an annual town meeting is, one, a special town meeting, we don't have to hold one. This is the annual town meeting, if a resident wants to put a warrant article on, they need 10 signatures versus 100. That, to me, is a, is a big improvement. And again, town meeting is really for the residents and for the government to do its business. But ultimately, this is their right of petition. So I don't think you can equate the two because special town meeting is not scheduled, although it is often in October. And I would certainly favor us scheduling it much earlier and giving them equally four months, if we could do that. I mean, I certainly don't have a problem opening the warrant in June and saying if we have a date certain for special town meeting, which we always have because we have to adjust the budget.
A lot of times we get to the deadline and we don't have time to review. So I think opening it up early with maybe, and again, we can't drive it, but if you get the draft back where we can have legal counsel review it before the deadline, we can make those edits, or the petitioner can make those edits to make it better for everybody. So I'm all for opening it early with some guidelines of we can get a review of it beforehand, then that frees up staff for a lot of the things that staff are bringing up, not necessarily the citizens themselves. I'd also like to recommend, like, under member items, we just keep it open that the warrant is open and for submittal deadline for review could be a certain date that provides ample time for review so they can make those edits. So we're not deferring or delaying, and we can take action on many of these things. And any legal issues are discussed beforehand instead of just deferring. And I, I see that a lot, and it's a legal process. We're not all lawyers. We don't understand. We don't write a lot of these things. So any assistance that we can provide for the residents to make sure that they, their items are being addressed and not just passed off would be helpful.
So I, I just wanted, I, I agree and support opening it early, as early as possible like this. But I want to make sure on the backend that we're not extending it too long to the point where we can't, not just, you know, have legal review it, but have the relevant boards and commissions review it as well. If it's an issue, that's to go to planning board. Planning board only meets once, maybe twice a month. We have to make sure that they're able to meet, you know, we review it, finance committee reviews it. So I want to make sure that we're not pushing it too late, you know, and after we all do our reviews, the town clerk's office has to print them, distribute them. There's a lot of work that goes into it, and I want to make sure that, you know, opening it early is fine. I want to make sure we're not closing it too late, that we can't do our due diligence and provide the best amount of information to the town meeting members in a timely manner.
Okay, I don't think that this is something that we need to vote on tonight. I think this is something that we can put on our agenda for that next meeting we have, whether it be the 29th of December or the 12th of January. And that'll give our town manager time to come up with some dates, you know, looking backwards, working backwards from the day to town meeting. When does it need to go to the printers, et cetera, just so we would have all that information.
Yeah, if I could ask, again, maybe the town manager, those items that may need to go to another board, if we can address which items and knowing that CBA might only meet once a month, that type of thing, we can say, here's a draft. If you'd like your opportunity to have it reviewed, we need it back by this date for a cursory review. So any dates on guidance, and again, it's not the final, but any way we can make the citizens understand the timeline and make that successful, that it gets on there without questioning or the need to delay.
That's a good point. Thank you.
And keep in mind that, you know, planning, zoning, finance, our board oftentimes does our reviews after the town meeting warrant closes. So I'm certainly in favor of let's look at when we close it and when we open it. I, I think all the suggestions are great. And I'm certainly not interested in voting on it tonight if we don't have all the information that we need. But I think the manager should meet with the town clerk and discuss, you know, what are the hang-ups at the end of this process? You know, we saw in the last election cycle that a lot of our residents had items and they were not well-informed as to what was going on. So what services can we provide through the town clerk, through the town manager's office, through the various boards and commission offices to assist them in understanding what it is, you know, it's not just 10 signatures and what you think of. It's got to be in legal form, there are certain requirements, all that good stuff. So I would make a motion that we hold this to the next regularly scheduled meeting with the same verbiage and ask town manager to have that information for us.
Do we need a motion to do it?
I'll just do it just to...
Put it on the agenda next meet, for the next meeting.
More comfortable making a vote, if you don't mind.
Then I will second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I was just to hold the item to the next scheduled meeting.
All right, next, I have member item 11B, discussion and potential board vote to set a date for the 2026 volunteer recognition event. And Dan Carpenter presented this item. Do you want to tell us about it?
Yes, so, you know, this, thankfully, the office staff, both Caitlin and Danielle and Sue and obviously Sharon prior to that, and the town clerk's office are key drivers of getting the word out and getting us to reach our volunteers, both past and present. We need to set a date. I know there's been questions in the past about April being a tough month with town meeting coming up and yada yada. So it made sense to why we're sitting here in December and everything looks like it's way, way out and we have nothing but time to set a date that we would hold it and then we can begin to plan it so that it's not, as we've all, I think, said tonight, a burden as, you know, the professional staff needs to assist in getting out the word, tracking RSVPs, helping getting space, and all that other good stuff, advertising it. So I want to be ahead of the eight ball this year, and I'm not volunteering to be the designate. I'm just saying. And I've pushed for this many years ago. And to me, this is a very important event for us as volunteers ourselves, but also so many others who, they're not seeking recognition, but it's nice to be able to get together. It's the only event that we have as volunteers in the community to get together and get to know each other and share, you know, something about ourselves. So I think it's important that we recognize our volunteers. They put in a lot of hours, a lot of work. The professional staff does as well, but, you know, the volunteers have a full-time job, and then they come after work and they put in many, many hours. And I would just like to make sure that we continue to recognize that and keep this event on the calendar.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, you know, I agree with everything you just said. And I like the idea of setting it this early because the goal, hopefully, is that we get the word out so no one schedules a meeting on that night, so that any board or commissions excluded from participating.
That's a good idea, Dan. You know what? In that April 6th date, looks pretty good, Monday, April 6th. April looks like a good month. We don't have a lot of other events going on.
Yeah, I was thinking that as well, that that was a good date because it was, it's before, it's after the, the, you know, town meeting warrant closes, but not, you know, not so, you know, in the middle of when we're all booking meetings to do our reviews of the various warrant articles. And I think, again, scheduling it this early, getting word out, at least to the chairs of the board or maybe even putting a hold on the calendar, so when they go to book, it says, hey, don't forget this is going on now. Because I do know that this is the night that the library board of trustees meet. So they always participate in the volunteer recognition event. So we'll want to get the word out. I think they're probably the only ones, I think, that meet the first Monday of each month. Hopefully, wage left committee will be done by then.
Okay, and I think we'll hopefully have avoided any potential bad winter weather by then.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to set the 2026 volunteer recognition event for Monday, April 6th, 2026.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, and our next item is to discuss and possibly take a board vote to designate a board member to coordinate the annual volunteer appreciation event. And Dan, you put this forth. Do you want to talk about it?
Yes, well, a board member always, you know, has to coordinate this and put together all the happy stuff and host, host the event itself with the help of the town manager and hopefully the chair. And in the absence of the chair, the vice chair, and in the absence of both, well, then we'll just have way more fun. But yeah, in the past, we haven't done this, or I don't think we've formally done it. But anyways, I think it's important that we do designate a member and that if people are interested in doing it, I am more than happy to step back and let somebody else handle the event and get a chance to see and do it for themselves.
So in the past, we have designated it because I remember making a motion to designate you.
You probably just did that to stick it to me.
Not at all. You organize a great event.
I will say, if, if no one else wants to do it, I would, I would enjoy doing it this year.
I'm more than happy to be a second person, but I don't want to take it on 100% myself. I did float one idea by Dan earlier during the, the, following the, the, the fire department event where they swore in and pinned our new battalion chiefs and our new captains. It was at Camp Gleason, and I was reminded just how great of an asset that building is. And I know we normally have it at the high school, but if it's possible to have it at Camp Gleason, that's, that's one of the things I would throw out there, especially with the adjacent kitchenette. It's an unindustrial kitchen, but it will probably make things a little bit easier to, for the cleanup, et cetera, if it can hold enough tables and chairs to be set up, but...
I'll attend. I would make a motion that we nominate Ms. Kavanaugh as the board representative.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, continuing, we have some minutes to look, do we have any public comments?
Yes, I signed up.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
Yes, I did.
And then we're going to look at some minutes.
I'm going to read it, yes, because we were asked to read it into the record, so I'm going to read it into the record.
Good evening.
Good evening. Todd Karine, 121 Hampton Street, member of the Board of Selectmen, though not speaking on behalf of the board. on behalf of the board. The board was contacted by a former member, also a resident constituent, who had asked that we read a letter that he wrote into the record for public comment, so that's the purpose of me standing up here today. So the letter is from Tristan LaLiberty, and it reads, "Members of the Board of Selectmen, I am willing, I am writing to you only in my capacity as a constituent and voter in Auburn. I am urging the board to take immediate concrete steps to reduce the carbon footprint of Auburn. The time for incremental gestures is past, we must act now to protect our community and future generations. As you know, when I served on the board, I led the effort to ban plastic bags in our town. I am proud of that accomplishment, but I also confess that I am saddened that, to date, it remains the only significant environmental success that Auburn can point to. Given the accelerating pace of climate change, incremental steps every half decade are simply not enough. A recent study reported by The Guardian found that New England is now warming faster than nearly anywhere else in the contiguous, contiguous United States, making it, quote unquote, "the fastest heating area of the US, bar the Alaskan Arctic." Temperatures across the region have increased by roughly 2.5 degrees Celsius, 4.5 degrees Fahrenheit since 1900, far above the global average, with warming accelerating in the past five years. This is not a distant problem, it is happening now, and the consequences will reverberate throughout our region, affecting ecosystems, public health, infrastructure, and quality of life. It deeply concerns me that under the current administration, this urgency is being ignored. Our state representative has repeatedly shown resistance to meaningful climate, climate action and has failed to offer effective representation on this and numerous other crucial issues for nearly 30 years. Simply collecting a paycheck and voting on other people's bills is not the representation Auburn or other, or our planet deserves. In light of that inaction, it falls to local leadership, including this board, to lead the way. Therefore, I respectfully propose that Auburn immediately adopt a multi-pronged climate policy, including, number one, divesting any municipal funds, pension funds, reserve funds, or other investments from fossil fuel companies. Number two, committing to installing solar panels on all suitable municipal buildings, schools, town hall, community centers, the DPW, and the new fire station. I urge the board to think not just in terms of rooftops, but also solar canopies over municipal parking lots, which provide dual benefits, clean energy generation and shaded safer parking. Town hall, the school campuses, the library, and the new fire station all have large parking areas that could generate substantial electricity while reducing heat island effects. Auburn should be a follow, should not be a follower on solar adoption, we should be a leader in Worcester County. Number three, launching a tree distribution and planting program. The town would procure saplings and offer them free or at reduced cost to interested residents with support for planting them in private yards, helping sequester carbon, increase shade, and beautify our community. This program would also help reduce, sorry, replace the thousands of trees our region is losing to disease, old age, and development. These actions are urgent and entirely within the reach of our town government. Since our state representative has failed to take action on this and numerous other issues, I'm calling on you to pick up the slack, demonstrate real leadership at, at a time when state and national leaders have failed to act. I would also like to add something personal. After my time in service in the United States Navy, I have always planned to come back home to New England to live and raise a family. Auburn is my home, but I do not want to raise my child or children in a New England where snow is a novelty, where winter feels like late fall, and where the seasons that shaped all of us have disappeared. Now, for the first time, I have to consider whether moving back home will even be best for my future family, and that thought is heartbreaking. I want my children to know the, the New England I grew up in, not an overheated shadow of it. I respectfully request that this letter be read into the next Board of Selectmen meeting as I am unable to attend in person due to my obligations overseas, or provide me the opportunity, opportunity to read this virtually at public comment. Thank you very respectfully, Tristan JF LaLiberty.
Thank you. Okay, looking back at our agenda, we have minutes from the November 24th, 2025 meeting. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about these amendments? So we can accept those minutes as read. Any other items? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, we're adjourned.